... is called to order, we'll start with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Marty, will you do roll call attendance?
Mary Jo Rasmussen.
Here.
Mary Jo Rasmussen.
Here.
Patty Jacobson. Laurel Meek. Amy Huffman.
Here.
And with other calls, here. And Scott Burton.
Okay. Has the meeting been noticed to the public according to open meeting law?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're at the point where public comment, is there anybody from the audience who wants to address the board with something that's not on the agenda? Okay, we'll move on. I would like to entertain a motion to move 8.1 after 6.1, the student senate report, a little early so they can get back for school the next day.
Second.
Okay. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes, opposed. Okay. We'll start out with their board commendation and we have Ruth Casper.
Thank you. Come on forward here.
Amy's gonna do the picture.
I've already took the photo, actually.
Oh, did you?
So, the school board is very excited to offer a board commendation to Ms. Ruth Casper. Not only has she served in her role as the secretary, I'm gonna say at the high school, but I remember working with Ruth Casper in Hickston. I can't tell you how many years, how many years were you out there?
Ten.
Ten years in Hickston, then seventeen at the high school? Fantastic. I remember when we were at Hickston and I was the music teacher and I would come in and complain that there was bat feces around in my classroom. And Ruth, "Yeah, I don't clean that," so she would tell me. But, in addition to her role as the fantastic secretary who takes care of so, 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 so many kids and parents' needs up at the high school, she has this other incredible talent that she shares with our community so generously. Ruth is also an EMT and serves the Hickston area in that role, but that has added such incredible value to her role with the district as well. It's certainly not a requirement of the job, but it is such a sense of, puts other people's minds at ease to know that there is somebody that's highly trained to be able to handle those situations as they arise and that your sunshiny attitude will be greatly missed, but that added piece is something that the whole staff is definitely going to feel. Each graduation, you see the students that have the "Thanks Ruth" on their hats because she does such a fantastic job building relationships with those kids as she interacts with those kids and their families on a daily basis. And so, for all of those things, we are so appreciative of retiring the district, Ruth. We wish you nothing but fantastic happiness in your retirement. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Ruth. Great to celebrate that. We'll move on to 8.1 and we'll do the student senate report.
I have Noah Plisant, student senate president at the high school. He's here to give a report. So recently, we've had two meetings since my last visit here. During that time, we had our Tibetan student program, which we have been sponsoring, a Tibetan student who lives in India right now. Her name is Saran Dukar. We donated $425 through a program called Tibet Aid. It was a unanimous vote among the student senate, so we're glad that we were able to do that, where you hope to have someone from the senate exchange letters between Saran Dukar and her and hopefully can get more updates. We have the Prescott Resolution that Prescott High School did. We decided to support that, which the Prescott Resolution is pretty much, they're trying to get rid of any mascots of derogatory terms. So you have like the Redskins and Indians and stuff like that for some high schools, and they want to wipe that off completely. So we are going to support them and then send a letter telling them that we will be supporting them. We also implemented our constitution, which we had a yes vote through the entire school, which the entire school voted on. And our committees, we have, we implemented political action and our school environment committee. Political action has been working on the recycling slash green school. So we're trying to get a better recycling program within our school and turn our school into a green school. We have our environmental teacher, Ms. Knodel, working with the student senate with that. She has been going to meetings and many, yeah, just meetings to figure out how to get that. She's about, let's say, knees deep to waist high in that. They've also been, school environment is our other committee, they've been working with political action to work on a pirating campaign that we have. Students have been sadly pirating movies and we want to help stop that. So we're getting a committee together to push forward so that won't happen anymore or else consequences will be pushed out. School environment has also been working on problems with subs. There's been like low morale for subs. Sometimes they don't really want to show up sadly, and we're trying to figure out a way to help the subs and the students work to find a way to have a better environment. And for the last thing that school environment is working on is the high school lunchroom, which they're trying to figure out some way to help the aides at the lunchroom, like found a way to help them, you know, control the lunchroom environment and have it be like a safe place for everyone. And that so far is pretty much it. We hope to have more updates for you soon. If you have any questions, please ask.
What kind of recycling efforts are you doing right now?
Um, there are some schools that we know that have a food compressor kind, it takes the-
Dehydrator.
Dehydrator, yes. That takes the water out and then turns the food, the rest of the waste into a composition so we can use it for like plants and stuff and we can recycle the water.
So you're interested in getting something like that?
Yes, we are. Any other questions?
You guys are tackling some pretty big environmental topics. Do you have a lot of good participation from the students?
Yeah, we hope to get more. I know Ms. Knodel's really reaching out and having the students work on that. So we're really pushing for that green school environment and, you know, hopefully we can get further.
I was talking more about the things that are more within the student body control, the lunchroom.
Oh, lunchroom?
Yeah. Those are interesting topics for the student senate to tackle and try to-
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And the substitute one, that's a longstanding problem and so I'd be very curious what creative solutions you guys come up with.
Yeah, they've been working very hard on that. They're coming up with multiple solutions to that.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you so much. Thank you very much for the report.
Thanks for coming, I appreciate it.
Thank you. We have gifts and grants for acceptance.
In your packet, you received a notification for a gift from the Wisconsin, Central Wisconsin Acre Services. They've made a financial donation of $322 to continue the development of the activity area. But on top of that, we just received notification of some very, very generous donations for the art, elementary art department. And ironically, they are also our focus on purpose, but Sarah Spindler, who has a real passion for elementary art and specifically an elementary art teacher that she very generously donates to annually, Sarah has gifted $5,000 for our elementary art program and that is supported, there's an additional $5,000 by Wells Fargo Community Support Campaign. And so, $10,000 going into our elementary art programming is exceptional and we hopefully can all recognize that those kinds of funds come when you have fantastic educators working in those roles who not only advocate for their programs, but also find creative ways to highlight the work of our students and to really showcase what they have. Additionally, Betty Norgard has donated $500 to the supplies in the elementary art classrooms as well. So, boy, how ironic that they happen to be with us this evening after a $10,500 gift that we did not give them. But we are really, really excited to offer those gifts to the district.
Is there a motion to accept the gifts?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes, opposed. Okay, motion carried. Move on to WASB resolutions. You receive those in your packets. Just wanted to just summarize a little bit, these are resolutions that have been submitted by local school districts for consideration for the WASB staff to concentrate on. And there should be timely and worthy of debate of all the 422 school districts. Does anyone have any questions or want anyone brought out that they feel strongly about that will be presented in January? Yes?
18.05, and that was the one where there was going to be on property tax statements, reports of the vouchers and what it would cost us. And I guess my question about that one would be the cost of those analysis and the cost of changing uniforms to put that on. I think that would be a concern.
And I, I think that the, I'm chairman of this committee for the state and that was a big discussion. We had some town clerks who were concerned about that and it just summarized that it's worthy of debate because there was a big debate over that. But it was very clear that they were wanting transparency about where that school funding is actually going. It doesn't go, it doesn't go to all the public education, it does go to the voucher programs as well. And they, they, they just want it to be transparent, that taxpayers understand that, that money is being taken away from public education and given. So there certainly was a debate within the committee and so that's why it's being forwarded on to the general assembly.
I think it's worthy to know, I'm just not sure that that's the correct way to do it.
Well, again, this isn't, WASB doesn't control that. That would be direction from the schools to advocate with our legislators. So if they get direction that our schools want this on township tax bills, they will go and advocate to the legislation for that on behalf of the schools. The schools don't decide that.
And there was one more as well, and that was tying school reimbursement to the CPI. I can't remember which one that was and I gotta look for the number, I'm sorry, I don't remember reading it, but-
I'm sorry, I-
Nope, it's okay. Give me a second here.
Your thoughts on it?
I'm not, I wasn't quite sure, I'm not certainly very versed in, in public finance, but I'm not sure that a consumer price index change translates to increased tax revenue. And if the consumer price index goes down, then does school funding go down? You know, that, I didn't see that clarified in that resolution, so.
Is that, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to-
I read it, I'm, I'm reading, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'm just wondering if it was one of them that we talked about last Friday?
Yeah, my phone is not, here. I took notes in my journal. Did you remember seeing that in there somewhere?
I, sorry, I was reading a bunch of stuff today, including our budget stuff for this week where I did read about CPI, so I can't confirm for sure it was in here. Let me just. There's the part that talked about high poverty aid that was linked to a district's extreme reduced population. That's not it.
No, it, it was back for, was it last year?
I'm just wondering if it was one that was discussed last year.
I'm wondering, it was in the 2013 ones I had. And I didn't know if those resolutions continue on and they come forward again, or if that was just what we did last year and so no.
I think they were just updating.
Yeah, they, we were just updating and we, we recreated some and deleted some too. But no, once they're passed, they stay in the resolution book as guidance for the WASB staff to advocate on behalf of the district. So once they're passed by the delegate assembly.
So that may have been last year's-
Yeah, it could have been.
Yeah, here we are. Yes, it was last year, 1706. That's why-
And that wasn't clear.
You were testing me. The WASB supports legislation to annually increase per people revenue limit statewide by a dollar amount equal to or greater than the percentage increase, if any, in the consumer price index on a fiscal year basis applied to the statewide average revenue limit authority per pupil. WASB persuaded the DPI to include language in its budget request to adjust the per pupil revenue limit upward by 200 per pupil in 204 amounts that approximated inflation as measured by the consumer price index. So the language of the CPI, yep, but the language of CPI did not make it into the final recommendation. It was an increase in per pupil allotment that was the final result.
I needed some clarification.
Yep.
So going back to the voucher transparency, what, what are your feelings on, on, on that? That we shouldn't be including that in the tax bill?
I don't, I don't know that it needs to be as in-depth as putting on every single person's property tax bill. I think that information should be easily and readily available, but I think the cost of doing that is gonna be significant for some of them.
Yeah, and, and I'll just assure you, that was part of the, the big discussion and then every, then we just came back, but it sounds like this is worthy of debate because there were a lot of different feelings on that. So it'll be interesting how that comes out and thank you.
My personal opinion is they could find a computer program to do it and it would be worth every single taxpayer seeing how much of our money is paying for education in Milwaukee and Racine. I do think it would be worth it, but I also don't get a vote at this table, so, at that table, but that's my personal opinion. It would be, because as we've talked about before, people don't go seek that information often enough. They wait until it is given to them and what is one document that most people do look at, it's their tax bill. And so if you want something very clearly obvious to them, that feels like it would be a good place to catch their attention, but I certainly understand the complications that that may create, but.
It would just be a different way of doing things and encouraging people to know where the money goes.
So vouchers are not statewide?
Pardon?
Vouchers are not statewide?
They are. If you recall, when we went through our aid allotment from the state this year, there was that line item that said, "This dollar amount is coming from Black River Falls School District residents through taxes and is being shipped to the Milwaukee School Choice Program and the Racine voucher program." So that's the amount that would be on that property tax bill, those Black River Falls School District collected taxes that are being shipped off to those areas. So not vouchers are statewide, those two programs are pulled out specifically, one because Milwaukee Parental Choice Program was the first dipping the toe into the waters of vouchers, Racine followed next. Now it has opened up a great deal more to the private schools throughout the state, but those are more through local tax bases. The Milwaukee and Racine are the only two that pull, they get their funding before any other public school gets their funding and that's not the way this with the other-
In state aid.
In state aid, thank you.
But therefore- I think it taxes more because we're getting less aid. Right. I don't, I don't, it is always true that rural areas get less than city areas and it's just an additional part of that.
And pulled out specifically because they're chiseling to another school.
Any more discussion on the resolutions? Okay, we'll move on to the Tiger Credit Union.
So I included in your packet, the Co-op Credit Union. We are at the end of the three-year agreement that we had with them in order for them to operate the Tiger Credit Union within the high school. If you have been up there, hopefully you have seen the very neat and tidy area that they keep with the pictures of their tellers that are our students. They continue to send a person, right now it's Jason Briening, that comes to the high school to assist our youth workers while they are there. And they are interested in renewing that agreement for, they say for, into the future. They did not put a year time bound on it, but that person was for three years. And so, wanted to have that discussion with you as to what your thoughts were about that agreement with them.
Do we know how many kids actually take part in that banking endeavor?
I don't know the number of kids. I know anecdotally, when I asked some questions of some of the people that work up there, they said that they probably handle more staff transactions than they do student transactions, but they did say that the students that are working there are getting some great experience. And the topic that was specifically pointed out to me by one of our business side teachers was that they work to engage the kids even casually when they are around during lunch hour, about the predatory credit card lenders and how even if it's not in a financial literacy class, they have conversations with kids about the flood of credit card applications that they are either currently getting or are going to get and talk to them about the predatory nature of that. And so, that staff member that I was talking to, again, from the business department, felt like it was a positive. She made the comment that, "I can't believe it's financially viable for the credit union, but if it's a community service that they are interested in continuing to provide, it certainly is value added." So that was that one person's perspective.
I, I think it's really nice to have a financial institution there. However, I am uncomfortable making it exclusive to the credit union because we're a public school. I'm wondering if there would be a way to reach out and, I mean, I don't know, you know, I don't know all the logistics of how much they've invested, what did they put in there, did they put, but it would be reasonable, it seems to me, to see if any of the other ones that were initially concerned had an interest of doing that.
So the process that it feels to me like you're describing is like a request for proposals, that if the district were interested in creating a financial institution in our school, we would do a request for proposals from our area banks and see banks and credit unions to see who is interested. The reason we didn't do that last time is because we didn't ask, they came knocking to us. And so, I'm not sure what I would ask for in that request for proposal. I could take exactly what the Co-op Credit Union has provided free of charge for us, the whole programming that they're doing, and show that with the banks and say, "Would you like to make a proposal to the board different from this or equal to this?" And then bring that back for you guys to choose, I could certainly do that. I don't know what more we'd want from them, so.
I, I just was very uncomfortable when all of a sudden arbitrarily one institution was given that role in the school.
Yep. And arbitrarily is a little bit strong because remember, they came to us, the others did not. So it's not like, you know-
And it was, it was a nice thing for them to do.
Yep.
But I certainly understand the concerns of the other institutions and I think it would be wise at this point to address that in some way. I don't know the best way.
Is there a, a time constraint on when we need to approve this continuation?
Well, they, I believe, would stay with their shop set up until we ask them to take it down. My concern in asking the other, I could certainly do some investigating as to the hours that the place is staffed and what that's costing. I don't know that I could ask the credit union for their business model for what they're doing there, to ask the other institutions. I mean, I certainly can do the hours that it's staffed and what assistance they're providing and then ask the banks if they're interested and knowing that it's at zero cost to us.
When, can you remind us when that three-year period contract is over?
January. But again, I believe they, that's when the, the date of the contract was signed, but we didn't start it until the fall of that coming, that following school year. So I believe we certainly have some, we signed the agreement early with the opening of the credit union at our grand opening of the new spaces at the high school.
I'm just curious, Shelley, because in the beginning, like you said, they came to us and, and I remember they, they came into the presentation and I thought it was really a, a super idea. At that time though, it was set, the number of years. And so, other lending institutions or banking institutions knew that. And so I'm curious, did anybody else come forward with a proposal?
Recently, there was disappointment shared after the grand opening, as other community people came to the grand opening and saw the Tiger Credit Union, then some other institutions were very disappointed at that time.
But they didn't come forward.
But there's been zero context in that.
I think whatever we do, I, I like the idea of having a three-year period or whatever we would determine a period to be, just because if there is an issue or if other financial institutions say, "Yeah, we want to be, the opportunity as well that there's a set renewal period."
So are you thinking that we-
On recommitment period or-
Are you thinking that we should go and ask the other institutions then at this time?
I have mixed feelings about it.
I do too.
Because on the one hand, they were, we voted to accept this, thinking, "What a great idea." And then afterwards, we got a lot of negative pushback and that felt really bad because that was certainly not anybody's intent in approving this. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to get, have that negativity again. However, they've done a lot and they're continuing to build it, which I think is very impressive. We've got a lot of what they want to do and continue to grow as far as what they're helping our kids with. And I think that's pretty fantastic. And I would hate to, I kind of would hate to pull a rug on some of that.
Well, with the success that they've had, I guess, you know, it would be, I would think we could approve for continuation and if someone else wanted to join in, then we would take that into consideration, but we have no reason not to move forward with continuation of the Co-op Credit Union, supporting the Tiger Credit Union, as far as my feeling is concerned about that.
I'm not sure I understand what you mean, somebody else wanted to join in, so.
Well, I mean, if someone else put a proposal that, "We, we want to do this in the school as well," that would be another topic for us to discuss.
So would you have more than one banking institution?
I mean, you could. We could, but I don't, I don't see any reason for-
You're gonna end up running out of space or something like that.
Yeah, yeah, I know, it'd be an issue.
Before you draw the line.
Yeah.
Does every bank then, you know, get to have a presence there if they want one?
I think, my thinking is, you know, if, if they were interested, they maybe would have come forward with that. I mean, maybe, I mean, I don't know.
Would the board feel comfortable if I called each of the individuals that I met with after this grand opening? If I called both of them and had a conversation with them? And if they say they're interested in putting together a proposal, do I just say, "Okay," and then go by the January board meeting? The board would be interested in hearing that proposal? And if they are not interested, then we move forward with the credit union?
Okay. I would like that. Okay, I make a motion to, to delay the, the continuation vote of the Tiger Credit Union until the January meeting.
If neither of the other individuals are interested, are you okay if I put Tiger Credit Union back on as an action item and tell them that, okay, thank you?
Okay, is there a second?
A second, Lynn.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes, opposed. Okay, motion carried. And now we're, we have Jen Dahl up for Focus on Purpose.
Thanks for having me.
Thanks for coming!
We're excited. We're gonna invite you, move out a little bit outside the box, a little bit, make some art tonight. I want you to meet my dear friend and visiting artist in residence, Jennifer Stevens. I'll let her explain herself. But what I gave you is our gift tonight is a set of note cards. And these note cards are my students who are going to a regional art show. So this one, that's a leaf, is made by a fourth grader named Maya. Are these all from her school? Okay, all of them. This is Jace, he's a fifth grader. Jace says no words and can't write his name, but he makes incredible art.
So the kids honor him.
He makes incredible art. He gives me goosebumps when he's in art, because he's amazing. This is by Sparkles and she's in second grade, white fish. This one is by Emery and he got all red when I told him he was going to the art show. He's like, "You kidding me?" He's in second grade. And this is by Mia and she's in fifth grade. And this was a lesson from a fifth grader. David told me, "Mrs. Dahl, could we ever talk about Terry Redlin? My mom has his pictures." And from that, I got some amazing art.
It's cool that you-
Yeah.
I listened to him.
And he was so excited. It was so good. I'm like, "Yes, I need to try, I need to teach you foreground, middle ground and background anyway, but let's use Terry Redlin." They were so excited. "My mom has these coasters, my grandma has this calendar." They were so excited. So I wrote down some facts for you, some numbers, and I'm not a numbers girl, but I had over 7,000 works of art to choose from, to pick five, where you get to move on to state. And without further ado, I introduce to you my dear friend Jennifer, and she'll explain what she's up to in my classroom this week, our classroom. So would you like me to do? Right there. You can be wherever you want to be.
Channel zoom in on you.
Well, my, my name is Jennifer Stevens and I'm a member of the Oneida Nation of Wisconsin. My father is Oneida.
Would you mind, otherwise your voice isn't going to carry you now. Thank you so much.
You would not know I am an opera singer.
Well, now you have a microphone, we want to hear.
I don't need a microphone. But my name is Jennifer Stevens and I'm a member of the Oneida Nation of Wisconsin. My father is Oneida. And without further ado, I introduce to you my dear friend Jennifer, and she'll explain what she's up to in my classroom this week, our classroom. Right there. You can be wherever you want to be.
Chandler, just zoom in on you.
My name is Jennifer Stevens, and I'm a member of the Oneida Nation of Wisconsin. My father is Oneida.
Would you mind, otherwise your voice isn't going to carry you enough. Thank you so much.
You would not know I am an opera singer?
Well, now you have a microphone, we want to hear.
I don't need a microphone.
But my name is Jennifer Stevens, and I'm a member of the Oneida Nation of Wisconsin. My father is Oneida, and my mother is actually a member of the Lakota Nation in Pine Ridge, South Dakota. So I have two tribes. But it's been a great pleasure to, to work with Jen, and she invited me to come and be an artist in residence here. And I do many things in the arts, but one of the things that I, that I enjoy doing is teaching and sharing the Oneida culture and Native American history through pottery. So I enjoy doing research and I have received grants and whatnot to, to go to upstate New York where Oneida is originally from. And so I am writing a book on the history of Oneida pottery, but I'm just gonna pass these around. The first one is a sample of what Oneida pottery looked like in a thousand years ago. So I made a replica. And then the next one is gonna be a pottery shard, that's gonna be what Oneida pottery looked like in like the 1550s and 1600s. We stopped making Oneida pottery in around 1685. And so anyways, it's been a great pleasure to be able to share what I'm learning as a researcher and a potter with, with students from, from two years old up to college level. So it is, I have some, a sample of, this is, this is a sample of what Oneida pottery looks like. I will trust you. So you can pass it around. That's, that piece I actually researched in upstate New York at the Rochester Museum and Science Center and also the New York State Museum in Elbe, New York. I worked in the archives and worked with anthropologists, archaeologists, and it's been with great pleasure to be able to bring that design home back to my community, because it's, it's a lost art from the, from the 1600s. So we do have some clay that's, that's out for you, so I will...
Is that on my peacock?
Yes, we're working on that. And Jen and I are quite the team, and I don't know if it's because we have the same name, I don't know what it is, but, but we work great together. So what I have here is, in my language, this is my Oneida name. And it's woa gosiyo. Can we say woa gosiyo?
Woa gosiyo.
So that means, it means a description of a peacock. So that's why I have a peacock here, that's my peacock theme. And so I asked my grandmother, because that's kind of an interesting name to give to somebody, it's a description of a peacock, it has a beautiful long tail. So I asked my 103-year-old grandmother, who is fluent in her language, and asked her why, and she says, because you have beautiful ways about you. So I was like, woo! So I also think it ties in with the arts, because I'm an artist and a singer and a poet and a photographer, I do a lot of different things, and an opera singer. So what would you like me to do next?
Show them how to pinch pot. Show them what we've been up to all day.
Okay, so I'm gonna show you what we've been up to, and...
I don't, do you want me to have a piece of clay for you?
Okay.
Sorry. What do you want me to do? Hold the lid?
Yes.
We're a good team.
First of all, I'm gonna take my rings off this...
You might want them off. You're gonna get your...
Okay. So the first step to making awesome pottery, Oneida pottery, is you roll the clay into a ball. Like you're making a snowball. The second step is, I tell the kids, thumbs up, you put your thumb center in the ball of clay and make a mushroom. The next step is, the technique is called pinch and turn, and I make the kids sing along as we do this.
Break thumbs in it.
Okay, children, are you ready to sing along? Okay, so, so the concept is to, because you're, you're making a pinch pot, you're pinching the clay to make the pot, so you're, you're pinching and turning, so you pinch the clay and turn. Pinch and turn, pinch and turn, pinch and turn. So anyways, I make, it's also, I encourage them to put their elbows on the table and thumbs up. It just helps to position you, it's a, it naturally puts you into a nice position. Okay, so we're gonna all sing together. One, two, three. Pinch and turn, pinch and turn, pinch and turn, pinch and turn, pinch and turn. And there you go. So that's, that's the beginning of creating a pinch pot. And I use this technique to create my pots.
Turn.
Oh, I use this technique to create my pots all the time, so it's not just like elementary level technique, it's something that I use...
I'd have that, wasn't it?
Yes, I started out with a pinch pot, and then after that, then I, I also add coils and like I, I build pots, you know, I think the largest pot I built was 24 inches high and about 24 inches wide. So, and I hope to build bigger ones than that. And so the next step...
You're gonna get your design stick?
Yep.
That's that pokey stick.
Yes, we're gonna get on our design stick. Okay, so this may seem like a skewer to you, but to us, it's a design stick. And the design stick is actually a third-year-old, third grade, sorry, a third-grade grader named it for me. I said, what do we, what should we call this? You said a design stick, and so I kept with it. So something so simple like this is what tribes and culture, you know, a thousand years ago, actually would be probably about 300 years ago or so, they, we used, we made tools, just something so simple as a stick with a, with a point on it, and you created, created incredibly beautiful pottery. And so the design stick, we used it for etching. So the, the etching is, is when you're dragging the, the point on the clay and...
And she's gonna do it and make it look super easy, and you're gonna be mad.
No, I tried to keep it as simple as I can, so it's just easier when you drag the, the point across the clay versus trying to go directly straight. It's best to have it on, at an angle. Do that. And then, and you flip it over, you can also, you put circles, and that was very common for Native American tribes to have lines, what do they call it? Geometric, linear, and we used also the stick to, to put the stamping of the circles as well. And that was very, very common for not just Oneida. And I found out that not all tribes made pottery. A lot of people would assume that, but they, not all tribes, because I'm part Lakota, because my mom's part Sioux, and she said that, not my mother, but I did research, because I wanted to do Lakota pottery, but they didn't make pottery. There's only some bands of the Sioux that did. So I was kind of bummed out by that, but I can still make contemporary pottery. They put Lakota symbols and whatnot on it, so...
And if you want to add your initials for the bottom, we will happily fire it for you.
Yes.
So Mary Jo, this is good stuff!
It is. It's getting a little thin, it's about, that's why I said I had to do this.
Hold on to it. You're doing a great job.
I got a dollar one.
Thank you for playing along with us.
It's fun.
So each week I see about 740 kids in six days. So Jennifer and I had seven classes today.
Wow.
Yes, we're, we're just talking about that. Busy, busy. You're never resting, you're always welcome to come. Come anytime, you don't have to call.
Now you realize we won't want to stop doing this.
I know, I'm sorry. It's, it's your therapy. Art therapy.
So Mary Jo and I have exactly the, the same initials, so...
You want me to say that?
Yeah. I don't think we're gonna have master's.
No. No, I don't think so. If you sing after, I want to hear this.
I originally started out as an opera singer. I've been singing for 25 years. And since 2009, I was at, because I, my family and friends discovered I'm a composer, I've been composing since I was 12 years old. And since I'm classically trained, since I was seven years old in piano, and then in high school in voice, my, my family and friends encouraged me to write music in my language, and that would be Oneida. And I recently wrote something in Lakota as well. But anyways, Jen wanted me to sing this, and this is the song that I sing for the kids, and it's my Oneida lullaby, and it's gaslada. And so we are ringing it as we speak.
We are ringing it, you're needing it.
So anyways, this is my thank you song for, for everyone for allowing me to come into your school and to work with your children and your teachers. It's been quite, quite a pleasure, so, and so I'll sing. Gaslada means to dream or to sleep in my language. Ganigawila, awila, that means, awila means baby, or ganigawila means a little baby. So I'm telling the little baby to sleep in this song.
Thank you very much for having us. We will not forget our presentation. We may have to go wash your hands, they need a hand washing break, we're sorry.
I'm good. I'm good.
You're welcome so much. Thank you for letting us.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Can you come back to you? Does he make any details?
Oh, yeah, I'm busy.
We're gonna have a chance to craft in a while. Thank you very much for letting us.
Thank you.
You can have the stick, you can have the, the stick if you want to continue to work on it.
Oh, I didn't know.
Yeah, but I have like the least creative person in the world.
Oh, don't say that.
Don't say that.
So that one's me.
Got it.
I'll take a photo. Okay, got it.
Well, thank you for having such culture into our schools.
Yes, I could be here all week.
Okay. What a, what a treat for experience for the kids. Thank you.
Fortunately, I did not break my own pot. Better you than us. I can always make another.
And Jen, also thank you for the, the facts here for us.
Oh, no problem. How can they relate to what I do each day? Well, that's my little story.
Very, very much.
And I couldn't get singers to come to you tonight, because they're auditioning for Balloon Renee.
I know, they're musical this year. But we had singing, and we had arts, it was fabulous.
Right on. So I said, oh, sure, you call my phone. The math department is not gonna be open. I know.
We don't have to do math.
And I'm saying it is easy, right? You're fine. We started to be more selective on who comes for Focus on Purpose, and we're gonna have the Oscar for it.
Okay.
Aw, thank you.
Absolutely. Happy holidays, everyone.
Yeah, you too, Jen.
Absolutely, thanks for having us.
I'll be there on Wednesday to judge doors, so I'll stop in and check on your party.
Well, my door is rock star.
No kidding. The art teacher has a creative door, excellent shot.
The winner.
That's right.
I'll be at Forest Street that day, though.
I guess I'll have to wait and see if you get a ribbon on your door or not.
I don't know. Ashley and I tried hard. Thank you again.
Thank you.
We don't have action on this, but we'll go summarize some employment changes that we've had.
Sure, just an acceptance of the, Eric Erickson was this month, and so it is on that one, although he's already accepted that resignation. And then we have hired Daisy Gertis, who is already started working part-time at the high school. She will be in Ruth Casper's position as the attendance secretary at the high school. And I just think that it's ironic that her sister is one of our secretaries at the middle school, and her dad is our head custodian over at Forest Street. So kind of getting the whole family, which is a fantastic statement to the employer, they must look at us as. So Tom and the high school staff are very excited too, beginning Daisy joining them.
Okay, youth options.
As I mentioned in my notes, the requests needed to be signed already and sent in, and so I apologize that we have done that. However, if for some reason you do not approve of those requests, we can always call and put the brakes on that. And so they, I'm asking for your approval of two students' youth options requests for spring semester.
I just had a question about the one that had so many. How, does that person take that outside of school? You noticed that there was only two checked? I didn't see that through what I saw on there.
I can clarify a little bit. Some of those courses were duplicate courses, so they were courses that we offered the youth option, they're not allowed to take.
Okay, so they're only two of them?
They're not to take. She's not gonna be taking those. Our student is a student who is going to the Challenge Academy, and so will be taking those courses second semester, and having completed the challenge.
And the two that were checked marked, are marked as alternate, so that must mean that they can't get into the courses that they originally had selected. Those other two that were boxed were an alternate.
I couldn't see it online, online.
That's right.
Well, I don't know.
So again, I apologize for the timing, it has a lot to do with the designation of our counselor, who usually handles this stuff, and so it will be more timely in the future.
I move to accept the youth options requests.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor say yes. Yes, opposed. Okay, motion carried. Now we'll go on to the report card.
All right, we're gonna start by looking at the district's report card. All right. If you notice, the, excuse me, the way the state reports out is similar to what you have seen in the past. As a district, we were at a meet expectations, that is where the majority of districts throughout the state land, in that same band of green there. When we look over at our, the box scores over on the side, you can see there are student achievements. Now, the test that would be included in this would be our third through eighth grade Wisconsin Forward Exam, and our 11th grade ACT are the two that are included. Unfortunately, our ninth and 10th graders take the ASPIRE test, which are the precursor to the ACT, but the state does not count that data. And so that will be important when you look at the high school data, because it is one grade level, one test is all that is being reported there, which means they can't show growth and means that it is really that one test on that one day that all juniors have to sit down. So that's really disappointing, and we're hopeful that since we're giving the ASPIRE anyway, we internally document growth from our kids when they take the ASPIRE. There's a projected ACT score that is a result of that ASPIRE test. We monitor what percentage of our students are gaining at or above that projected ACT score, but unfortunately, the state does not. And so we already know that our last year's junior class had a lower ACT score than the junior class before them, which would be why the high school scorecard went down. It is reflective of 117 kids on one day. So that being said, let's go through the rest of the district. When you look at the student achievement, as you can see in English Language Arts and Math, we continue to be below the state average. I will show you some charts included that show our longitudinal to see where we've been and where we're headed. The district growth, you will see we are exactly at the state average with 33 in both ELA and Math. And then when it comes to the closing of the gaps, you will see that we are at a 66-6, and the state average is a 61-7. If you've listened to much of Dr. Tony Evers' presentations on the state of education, he talks a lot about the achievement gaps in Wisconsin and how they are more drastic in Wisconsin than they are in many other states. And so the fact that we are closing gaps faster than the state average is a very positive, positive piece. When we look at on-track and post-secondary readiness, looking at the top part, our graduation rate, you will see that we are slightly above the state average, both at a 36, but we're .9 or .5. The attendance rate, we are slightly above the state average there. And then they factor in our third grade ELA and our eighth grade Math. So for some reason, when they're looking at on-track and post-secondary readiness, those are the two pieces, so third grade ELA and eighth grade Math. Another reason when you look at the high school card, they don't have third grade ELA nor eighth grade Math, so those also wouldn't factor into there. So our on-track post-secondary readiness is below the state average, but it is our achievement scores, as we've already talked about, that are bringing that down. What I wanted to show you, Jill, if you would scroll ahead to page eight in that document. There is an awful, perhaps you have questions before we get there, but there is just something I wanted to highlight on page eight for you. It's not moving. Let me try again. Is that the front page up? Page one away. Okay, well, I'll just talk about it, that's okay. As you look through the rest of the documents on the detail pages... Did you have any questions about the detail within the district card? In the past years, we've gone over some of that. I also wanted to point out while you're there, can you go to page 14? When we talk about our alt-ed programs and high school graduation rates, I just wanted to share with you how, I'll keep going just a little bit more, a little bit more. There we go. That the state measures not only the four-year cohort graduation rate, but they also keep track of a six-year cohort graduation rate. And that's just interesting for us to remember, because sometimes when we see a class graduate and we notice not all the individuals are in there, we certainly are, that's taken into account in our score, in the four-year graduation rate. But the state does continue to monitor who graduates in the six years. And obviously, our special education students, students with disabilities, you'll see that their six-year graduation rate is 92.3%, whereas their four-year is 54.5%. I would remind you that many of our special education students stay with us until they're age 21, which is their right through pre and appropriate public education. But it is nice to see that the six-year graduation rate is up above 90% for that group. So just wanted to share that with you, that when you measure by the six-year, we've got several groups that are at 100% for their graduation rate. And part of that is due to the alt-ed programs that we provide, and some of it is just coming back for some of those summer credits, credit recovery and so forth. Would you go to the other document? Do you have questions about this before we go to the comparison? Okay. Would you go to the other document, please? So this is just the district information. And my recollection of our last conversation is that you were interested in scheduling a board development session to dig deeper into each one of the buildings. And so I'm going through the district information tonight, and we can do that for you another time. So looking at, the black is the state and the orange is Black River Falls. This is our ELA. Again, that would be all of those groups clumped together, third through eighth, and then high school ACT. Let me just roll through the charts. And there's Math. It is interesting. Remember that the assessment has changed over the years. And so when you see us moving along with the state, there was a change in assessments and then another change in assessments. And I would just remind you again that there is not a report card that was given in the 14-15 school year, because that was that one year of the Badger exam. And they just, it wasn't around long enough for them to draw any correlation data, so.
Are they down or over?
They should be down.
So we've had two years of the same test.
Yes. Yep.
I'm not sure. They're not sure.
Like in the air messages, it's insufficient. Like I can't. So how close are these trends to the STAR data?
We have a higher percentage of our students that are at or above benchmark when we use our STAR than we do this exam. But as far as trends, it's difficult, because when we look at our STAR, we usually look at a grade level or a cohort of kids. This is lump sum every third through eighth grader and then our.
So it's a different comparison.
It is. And when we look at this, they're using their calculation. And if you read that last document, it talks about how they're weighting more heavily students living in poverty, whereas our STAR data is just raw data. There's no weighting or anything. It's you scored here or you didn't. So we just started putting together this year that lump sum, what is our district picture in STAR, to try to draw some correlation. So I can certainly share that with you thus far. So student achievement overall, that is where they lump together both ELA and Math. And then these are our growth. You can see we started above the state average, took a little dip, and now we are back at the state average for growth in ELA and Math as well. Orange is always Black River Falls. Black is always the state. And then our overall student growth is at the state average. And then our closing of the gaps. That's a nice trend upward. And in Math, we're above the state average at the closing of the gaps and we get a nice trend from previous years. And our graduation rate. Closing gaps overall, because for the high school, they do measure closing gaps and graduation rates. So that is one other piece of data that the high school has. The next one? Yes, that's it. We will talk about it when we dig more into each individual building, but would like to talk just briefly about some fantastic scores at the middle school. If you took the opportunity to look through there, the middle school was darned close to exceeds expectations in there. And it really is their growth that just took such an upward trend. And if you recall, that started last year in our data and certainly continued this year, that both ELA and Math, there's some really, really great growth trends at the middle school. And so that's exciting to see. And hopefully, that overall measurement, as we said last year, if our growth and our closing the gaps continues to be faster than the state average, we can only assume that we're headed in the right direction when it comes to achievement. These are all the little pieces that start that big turd in net effect. So we're awfully excited about that. Did you have questions about any of that information? Comments or?
Wasn't it about the same time when they started PBIS at the middle school, too?
That's been a couple of years for sure. That's almost the challenge, that when somebody says, well, why do you think the scores did that? We do so many things. It's hard to attribute a change to one or two actions when there's so many things happening, you know? We would like to think it's because of things like PBIS and the Math Grant and the huge focus on the collaboration between the ELA teachers. I mean, you'd like to think those are all the things, but it's tough to pinpoint which one it might be.
But with the middle school, it had to be all those interventions. I mean, wasn't it like two years ago or three years ago that the scores were way down in the middle school? And now look at those with everything we've put in place. It's really helped. I was really happy with that score.
Good. So is the middle school.
It got me. Okay. Any questions? Okay, we'll move on to a scheduling report.
All right. Just wanted to share a couple verbal highlights with you. So we had Dr. Mike Reddick, who is a scheduling guru, is the best way I can explain him. He's a master of Excel spreadsheets, I'll tell you that. He sat in here for multiple days. Winner. For multiple days. And would just whip through those spreadsheets and could move things all over the place and just really, very, very talented. So we brought him in because we've been having some challenges with the middle school schedule the last couple of years, and we kind of feel like we tapped out our knowledge base. If we're bringing this gentleman in from such a distance, let's see what else he can offer for us. And probably one of the most significant changes for the elementary school, he very quickly got us to a place where every single one of our elementary grade levels, starting in second grade through fifth grade, is going to have a 45-minute prep time where the whole grade level is available every single day out of the school year. And they're not losing any instructional time, because the way the schedule is currently done is, let's just say there's six teachers at, well, there's five teachers at fourth grade. So one class goes to Fayed for 30 minutes, one class goes to music for 30 minutes. Maybe, well, that would rotate every other day. We'd have those classes for 30 minutes. One time in a six-day rotation, I'd get art, and that's like a 50 minutes. So that's kind of a holy grail for most elementary teachers. I have art, and so it's their big block of prep time. Guidance would be scheduled in there, but it was usually a schedule that was done later. Teachers would sign up for LMC time, for book browsing, that kind of thing. He brought an idea to us that if we were to compact all of those things together, we could create a schedule that was a consistent 45 minutes every single day, as opposed to an hour this day in the morning, 30 minutes here in the afternoon, and all over the place, which breaks up their flow of instructional blocks a great deal. So what we, he proposed, and the elementary principals and Stephanie worked very, very hard on to see if we could make happen, was, he said, you don't need any more teachers. You just need to use them differently. You have two elementary music teachers. You have two elementary Fayed teachers. What if there were two music classes happening at that time and two Fayed classes happening at that time? And then you schedule guidance to be in there, and then you schedule LMC skills to be in there. Now you've created all of these different rotations that could all happen at the same time. So instead of, for example, and art would be in there once a six-day rotation. So instead of John Thoreau being the Forest Street Fayed teacher and Andy Oscar being the Red Creek one, they travel together. So they're both teaching Fayed to the same grade level at the same time for 45 minutes, and then they move to the next grade level at the same time for 45 minutes, and so on and so forth. We met with the music art and Fayed, we call them Mape for short, teachers. They were extremely concerned about the safety side of teaching two Fayed classes in the Forest Street gym. It is also their lunchroom, and it's just not that huge of a space. So we did some investigating to see if we could even remove the stage that's there to increase the gym teaching space, because the idea of that common prep time for a grade level was something that they fantasized about for years, like the middle school has, and we've just never been able to make it happen. So we kind of dangled this carrot, and everyone was pretty motivated to see if we could make it happen. We could not get past the Fayed space in Forest Street. So what we decided for grades, one kindergarten and first, they will be in pods. So half of the kindergarten team will have 45 minutes, and the other half of the kindergarten team will have 45 minutes. And then half of first grade, half of first grade. Then all of that staff goes over to Red Creek and does second grade for 45, third grade for 45, fourth grade, fifth grade. And so the teachers are very, very excited that, there's a lot of pros to it. The time for them to talk more about their teaching and to co-plan. Right now, that Friday PLC time is a huge gift, and they are loving it. But of course, once they start appreciating it, they want more of it. And so the ability to not take any instructional minutes and give them that time each day is really exciting. The other is that for our special ed staffing, it actually, a whole grade level will be teaching literacy at the same time, which will give them access to the kids on a much more regularly scheduled time. The, there's a lot of pros for the elementary level. They're very excited. The music art and Fayed people are not excited about it. They're feeling like, and I respect their opinions a great deal. As a former specialist teacher, I absolutely get that. We have two music classrooms at Red Creek. There's already an overflow room, so that won't be a problem. But the gymnasium there, it was built as a two bay gymnasium, and so it was designed to have two classes going at the same time. The Fayed teachers and music teachers are concerned that it's going to infringe on some of their teaching autonomy, that they're gonna feel like they need to move lockstep with somebody else. Right now, like John Thoreau does the K1, and he does second grade, and Andy does third, fourth, and fifth. Now each of them are gonna have to do all grade levels, and so it is more content, more kids, more. And then you hear from Jen Dahl, who already does every single grade level for that 45 minutes. So the grade level teachers are very, very, very excited. The Mape teachers, we continue to work with them to see how we can minimize some of their challenges that come along with it. But we feel strongly that with our academic achievement scores where they are, we need to make this move, because it is going to streamline so much of the disruptions that teachers feel throughout the day. You're in the middle of a literacy lesson, and then it's time for your guidance lesson to come in for 30 minutes. It just is really gonna make some nice uninterrupted blocks of instructional time that they're really anxious to have. So we worked with Dr. Reddick again last week, and I think the elementary is ready to make it happen. So that's exciting. At the middle school, we started that conversation from, we have, their box used to be about 43, 44 minutes long, somewhere in there. And there was a double block of ELA and then 43, 44 minutes of Math. And then same with science and same with social studies. And again, looking at our data, we need more instructional time for Math. And so there is now going to be a double block for ELA, a double block for Math every single day for every kid, and then a science and a social studies. And so the blocks became a little bit shorter, 40 minutes. And we took all those little pieces and lumped them together to make another hour in the day. We asked the grade level teachers what their highest priority was, because right now, there's a seventh grade Math teacher. She can't teach a double block to five sections. So somebody else now has to teach seventh grade Math who's never done that before. Right now, seventh and eighth grade are content specialists, meaning on each team, there's a Math teacher, there's two ELA, there's a science and a social studies. Sixth grade does a little bit more cross-content areas already. We asked the grade levels, what is your highest priority? Do you want to be content area specialist, meaning you would have to teach more than one grade level? Or would you prefer to maintain your grade level team, knowing that some of you have to teach other content areas than what you've taught in the past? And they prefer to preserve their grade level teams, knowing that some of them are gonna now tackle new content area. And so sixth and seventh grade have a solid plan over who's picking up which content areas to make that work. And eighth grade, we're still working with them to try to use the teachers' skills that are on that team and make sure we are set up. Remember, at the middle school, they already have, well, they have the Friday PLC time. That is cross-grade level content. So sixth, seventh, and eighth grade Math teachers get together. But they also have that team time. So if there's two teachers teaching Math, even if it's somebody's first year teaching Math, they've got access to this other person who's been doing it for years. We also will provide whatever professional development we need to for those people to feel confident in tackling that. But it is clearly a decision based on what we think is best for kids. So that's a real significant change for the middle school. We also were able to, we were also able to clean up some of our specials time. Music, where band and choir has been at the middle school, has been all over the map over the years. I mean, one year choir was even during lunch hour. It's just been all over the place. And where band was drastically impacted, the rest of the class sizes in the specials, and it was never a heterogeneous grouping. It would be, you have the band kids and the non-band kids, and there was a, they would travel together through all those specials, and it really created a lot of imbalance through those specials. Dr. Reddick was able to help us fix that during their, what we call Tegar time. That's when band and choir will happen. They will still have the ability to have band. A student could still be in band every other day and choir on the opposite days if they're in that grade level, unless they are in need of a tier-three academic intervention. We're gonna call the parents and say, your child is significantly below in either reading or Math. At this time, we're making them pick one musical ensemble, so that they can get that additional help that they need in reading and Math. And we felt like that was a pretty reasonable discussion to have to have with a parent. If they're not in need of a tier-three intervention, then they could be in both ensembles. So we're excited about that. It leaves all the rest of the classes balanced, and we've got some great offerings at those levels. And so there's a little trepidation about tackling new content areas, but there's a lot of excitement about the opportunities for kids there. When it comes to the high school, it's much more of a mixed bag. That group really, not everyone agrees that the schedule is broken, and so not really sure what needs to be fixed. And so there was lots of conversation about it, about the AB block versus just the four-block day, where you only have four classes at a time, as opposed to the AB, where you have eight classes at a time. There is a feeling by some of the staff that have different classes each day. I'm gonna use this one example. FC, our Family Consumer Science teacher, she doesn't teach like foods three times. She teaches like foods. I mean, she teaches all of these different content areas. And so at any one time, she's got six classes that she's offering and trying to prep for and stuff. So there's been some conversation, how can we fix all that? What they decided to do at the high school level is they are gonna survey the staff of the classes you currently teach. Which ones do you think would best serve the students if it was every day for a block for a semester versus every other day for a full year? And we're just gonna see if we get enough balance of teachers who felt strongly one way or the other that we could offer that hybrid opportunity. So a kid might have some classes that start at the beginning of the year and go every other day for the semester. And they might take some classes that meet every single day for nine weeks. It really is dependent on what we come up with. And so remember, we're down one full-time counselor, and the counselors and Mr. Chambers do the schedule. So we're gonna do the survey of staff, knowing that it is very possible that very little changes for next year, but it would be good information moving forward to that following year. So the high school is in a little bit more of a fact-finding. There is a feeling by some of the staff that have different classes each day. I'm going to use this one example. FC, our Family Consumer Science teacher, she doesn't teach like foods three times, she teaches like foods, I mean, she teaches all of these different content areas. And so at any one time, she's got six classes that she's offering and trying to prep for and stuff. So there's been some conversation, how can we fix all of that? What they decided to do at the high school level is they are going to survey the staff, of the classes you currently teach, which ones do you think would best serve the students if it was every day for a block for a semester versus every other day for a full year? And we're just going to see if we get enough balance of teachers who felt strongly one way or the other, that we could offer that hybrid opportunity. So a kid might have some classes that start at the beginning of the year, and go every other day for the semester, and they might take some classes that meet every single day for nine weeks. It really is dependent on what we come up with. And so remember, we're down one full-time counselor, and the counselors and Mr. Chambers do the schedule, so we're going to do the survey of staff, knowing that it is very possible that very little changes for next year, but it would be good information moving forward to that following year. So the high school is in a little bit more of a fact-finding mission yet at this time.
So when do you anticipate that these things would actually be implemented, especially from the schools where you feel like you have things worked out?
Elementary and middle school are ready to rock next fall.
Okay.
Yep. And the high school gets more challenging, because they do their scheduling so early, like January, February is when the kids fill out those schedules. And so that's why their, theirs is the most complicated, and it's the least clear path. And so it very well may take that additional year, but again, it's all good. There's an idea of moving that focus period from the end of the day. Perhaps you remember, students and it is talked to us a little bit about how they don't value that time at the end of the day. There's been some conversation that they call the lunch and learn, that in the middle of the day, there's one-hour break time in the middle of the day, that is everybody's lunch and that focus time. And half the teachers have lunch in the first thirty minutes, and the other half are offering offerings during this time, and then they switch that second half, and kids just kind of flow through. And if they're in need of help at teacher, it's called, it's a computer program called roosting, so if you're filling my class, I can roost you during that other part of that lunchtime, and then you have to come to me for that additional help. So that's the one change that they feel pretty comfortable with, that they might be able to make happen for next year, and that would eliminate those minutes at the end of the day that are focused right now. So lots of discussion to be had, but we feel like it was a really, really, really worthwhile couple of days to have Dr. Reddick up here. So, yeah, good stuff.
That's amazing.
Well, anyway.
He did all that in a couple of days?
He was here three days in November and two days last week, and Stephanie was a part of all five days. I made it four days. I missed the first elementary scheduling, and honestly, he just, he's, somebody says, well, I wonder what would happen if, suddenly a new page opens on his spreadsheet, click, 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 and you're like, oh, that's what that would look like! And, you know, we were like, well, we're concerned about balancing class size as well. And, I mean, he just is really good at that. He has a nice scheduling brain, and he has examples from all over the, not only in our country, he has them around the world. He's gone to other countries and done scheduling things with them, and so it was well worth the time. By the time, he would, like, he's got a period every time, that's why I keep looking this way. He'd be like, time for a brain break, we need some food, we need something! Like, he would just get too many schedules and pages going through his head, and he would need a little break. But I, I know the middle school and elementary people felt like it was really, really good time spent, and they're excited at the opportunities. And high school just needs to, just needs to clarify a little bit, theirs is definitely more complicated, so.
Well, you know, we, we are constantly getting data, data, and this is one way that you're responding to it.
Absolutely.
By offering that extra literacy and math, that's awesome.
The high school was really excited. When we said the middle school kids were going to come out of middle school with two blocks with a double block of math every day, the high school math teacher that was on the scheduling committee was like, oh, my gosh! He was so excited about that, so that's good.
Any questions or comments? Okay, we'll move on to the Student Success Committee report.
I have to defer to someone else. I was ill and was not at the meeting, so.
I think Amy was, right?
I was. I can help you out if you. Yeah, we had a lot of discussion on, on, yeah, you better do it, because you'll just, I'll mumble, and nobody will understand it, because I want to present well.
So we talked about the finish-up of policy, we had the, previously looked at the policy for selecting instructional materials, and so we, oh, sorry.
I just, this is clay.
I should have just kept talking to the back, I just had to go up here. So we finished the rules related to the policies around selecting instructional materials specific to LMC materials, and so those will come to policy committee, and then will come to the board. And so then, our next event diagram has been waiting for us for a little while, just because we've spent a lot of time with the policy revisions. But this was one thing that the Student Success Committee talked about earlier, at the end of last year, actually, having department presentations come to the board level. So long, long ago, we used to do curriculum instructional materials cycles, so every seven years or so, if a area adopted new resources, kind of at that same time, they would go through a big review, and all of that would come to the board in a form of presentation, kind of a check-in as to where a department was. And so there was a desire to bring something like that back, but not quite the same long timeline, something with a little shorter timeline. So we talked about these phases, and I brought this first to the six through twelve PLC leaders for their feedback first, before bringing to the Student Success Committee. And originally, I had years on here, so that every department was slotted into phase one in this particular year, phase two, phase three. And the leaders really felt strongly that with the PLC cycle, that they are currently operating under every single Friday, that they are going through kind of that continuous improvement cycle already. And so being locked into a phase in a particular year, they might not be quite ready for that phase, or they might already be halfway through the next phase. And so they felt like, had asked the committee, could we instead look at, just reporting to the board where we are in the cycle, what phase we're in, and what the work that we're doing? And so that brought about a lot of questions, and so if you scroll down to the next page, Jill, the committee talked about, since Amy was the only board member there, we wanted to bring to the full board for some additional discussion. But lots of questions of how many presentations per meeting is reasonable, what kind of configuration would the board like to see, just an overall K-12, with more K-5 focus, 6-8, 9-12, some conglomeration of those? And then as far as content goes, what is the board looking for? So we talked a little bit about a ten-to-fifteen-minute timeframe, was kind of Amy's, so that probably is about good. Otherwise, people start to, it's just a lot of information. And then what should the focus be? And so we talked about curriculum, as to where people, where the department or whoever was presenting to you, what their curriculum work was, instructional methods, what was their work there, what assessment work have they been doing? We also threw out the idea of maybe one highlight and just some next steps, so more general. But then we also talked about, we wanted to be a little bit more depth than the focus on purpose, which already happens, and that's really kind of one highlight. And so really looking to the board for what are you looking for from those presentations? And the teachers are willing to do whatever works for the board, they just wanted to make it meaningful. And so they really asked about what kind of configuration, because now, if you, as you remember, we have a leader every grade level, K-5, we have a 6-8 content leader, and a 9-12 content leader in the core areas, and then it's a little different for some of the other departments. But listed the departments down there at the bottom for you as well, because that was also something we talked about. Do you want to hear from every department every year in some way, shape, or form? So sorry to throw a lot of questions at you, but that was a lot of our discussion.
Or we could decide that this was going to be our focus on purpose and just a lot more time for it, and it serves double duty. I mean, that would be an option as well, as opposed to adding an additional presentation to each board meeting, it could be the same.
Wouldn't we have our board development time? Do you think we could add this onto the agenda to our discussion for that, during that time?
I think, I think that would be a good idea.
Well, that was pretty painless.
Okay, thank you.
The only other thing we talked about at the committee was, I added a curriculum directive report to every meeting, just to give them a little more information. So we looked a little deeper at the PLC structure, and what, kind of, we looked at some protocols that PLCs are using on a regular basis, and I don't know if you found anything helpful to share, but that's about it.
Okay. Any questions for Stephanie or Amy? Okay, we'll move on to finance and facilities. You received the expenditures in your packet. Does anyone want any of those brought out for discussion or questions? Okay, hearing, hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
So.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor, say yes. Yes. Opposed? Okay, motion carried. Policies were on the second reading here for action. We reviewed these last month. Does anyone want any of those pulled out for further discussion? Okay, hearing none. I asked for a motion for consent agenda for approval of all the policy committee changes recommendations.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
One second.
Thank you. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? Okay, motion carried. We also have meeting minutes that were in your packet. Does anyone have any questions about that? If not, is there a motion to approve?
Any motion to approve the meeting minutes?
Thank you.
One second.
Thank you. All in favor, say yes. Yes. Opposed? Okay, motion carried. We're on to Dr. Silverson's report.
All right, just a few things for you. The first one is, if you remember the bus accident that happened a couple weeks ago now?
November twenty-second.
November twenty-second, thank you, Jill. Just an update on that, that that bus was one of our new 2018 buses, and it was actually deemed totaled after that incident because of the leaking and all kinds of other things. But fantastically, they were able to secure one from Midstate, the place where we bought that one from, and it is a year newer, so it is 2019 already, and we only had to pay $5,200 after the insurance rate. So it was unfortunate, it was a new bus, but we got an even newer bus for a very, very reasonable price, and they had one on the lot that we would be able to put into use right away, so we're excited about that. While I'm speaking of lots, I also want to just mention that the city administrator, Mr. Chow, actually talked to me, just a casual conversation, they are not asking for any action discussion, just I want you to know that the conversation happened regarding our lot next door here. The city had expressed an interest in possibly creating a, safety services, I can't remember the name, but emergency services building next door. They were interested in purchasing the lot, and they wanted to move their EMT services and their fire department, and from the building which they currently reside in downtown. And they were also interested in adding the police department, which is currently housed in the city hall. And he said, do you think that'd be possible? And I said, I think I have zero opinion on that, and there are seven board members that would need to talk an awful lot about that. And so I just wanted you to know that the question was asked. There's been no further conversation about it, this happened several, several weeks ago. They certainly don't have a pot of cash sitting somewhere either, that they are just waiting to invest in something like that, but we're just wondering if it was even a remote possibility. And so I just shared that with you to start mulling over and consider your thoughts on. I would suggest that before we made any move like that, there'd have to be a couple of public meetings to gather some feedback and input on that, because it would be.
I can imagine that people that live around here would not like hearing sirens on you here.
I'm crystal clear our neighbors would prefer not. However, as Brad shared with me, they don't have to turn their sirens on right away. Okay. But it still would be a very different traffic pattern than what we currently have. The reason they feel like that lot is desirable is because they would be able to do some drive-through bays, where they would have access on both sides of the street, was their thoughts. So I just share that with you, I don't need anything about it, but just wanted you to know the question was asked. And then I wanted to share, I did send out the email to everyone, but that the committee is ready to make a recommendation for the eighteen-nineteen school year calendar. We tried hard to follow our past practice, and that we would come up with two sample calendars, but to be honest, there are so many things that are locked in that made it really difficult to try to come up with another creative solution. The fact that the state still will not allow us to start before September first, and September first happens to be on a Saturday, so that means with Labor Day on Monday, September fourth is really the first day that we could hold classes. That automatically pushes us into that week of June, if we're going to have any kind of breaks in between. And so the fact that both Christmas and New Year's are on at Tuesday really dictates part of that Christmas break, because we're not going to go on. So there was just a lot of factors that were immobile on the calendar, that the committee felt strongly that the one option that they put forth was really the only viable option with a few minor changes, like they decided that the Wednesday before Thanksgiving would be a professional development day. Others have said, well, could we have that professional development day be in April, where we now have a vacation day, and take that as a vacation day? Yep, that, I mean, that's not going to change the world, but I'm also a firm believer in those, everybody was invited to that table, those people who chose to come and voice their opinions, I feel like their opinions should hold some water, because they were the ones that came and did the work for us. And so I did send it out to everybody, I gave a little bit of a rationale via email about why there was only one, and I gave them to this Friday to share any other thoughts that they had. And so far, we've gotten a, thanks to those who are willing to come and do this work is pretty much the feedback that I've gotten, other than the possibility of moving that. I think because Thanksgiving is so close, everybody remembers how it felt to come to work that Wednesday before Thanksgiving, but they don't, haven't felt recently what April feels like when they're looking for an Easter break. And so, you know, that is always the challenge. That when they put forth two examples, they feel like too many people just go and look at which one gets us done earliest in, in June or end of May, whatever, and they forget how badly people need, students and adults need a mental break and just need a long weekend every now and then, just to recollect a little bit, so rejuvenate. So anyway, it is out there right now, and hopefully it will be to you for January.
I thought it was good how you put that down, that if people had complained about it, that they should suggest the fix. I thought, perfect, because everybody can always complain, but then show me the fix.
I, I think people forget how many restrictions there are. I think that, you know, people are like, well, why can't we start in August? Because the state won't let us! Well, can't we write one of those waivers? They don't accept hardly any of them. I've heard griping from so many districts that they've tried to get a waiver, and the state just says no, so, yeah.
Do, have we, like with that whole Thanksgiving, Easter thing?
Yep.
Have we ever considered how many kids are absent, like, right before Thanksgiving or during an Easter break?
Yep, neither one of those changes would affect students, because, one, it would be moving a complete vacation day to a professional development day, which kids don't attend either one of those.
Right, right.
Yep, and so we have, we have looked at that. Thanksgiving is a little bit more predictable, because it's always on Thursday, whereas some of the other holidays, depending on the day of the week that they fall, if it creates like a, a two-day week, well, then we lose a lot of kids on those two days, because families will decide to just stretch it. So we have looked at that on other weeks where we've tried to give a longer weekend, which one moves? Like, well, even Christmas and New Year's moves a little bit, that if we, if Christmas is on like Thursday, and we try to go to school Monday, Tuesday, we get families who just decide, we're out for the week, and, and don't come then. So we try to play with that, where the holidays land naturally, and what we can do. Just wanted to share that, and now the building.
It's got a little clay in that button there, but.
Did you save your design? Could I?
Okay, I guess this is an effort to give you an overview of what we do at Forest Street and at Red Creek with our family nights. So I know some, some of you have had the opportunity to stop by and see it in action, which has been wonderful, and some of you have not. So it's kind of a snapshot in time of some of the things that we're, we're doing at Forest Street with our community, and trying to get them into our buildings, and, and work on some of that community engagement, as Rick will talk about later on. So Jill's going to be our slideshow master.
I think she's trying to hook up the thing you have to do yourself.
Okay.
There you go. This one, I think, is.
All right, next.
Oh, did it just get frozen? Okay, un- frozen. There we go.
All right, so, in an effort, I really don't want to read that whole thing to you, so I'll just kind of summarize what we've got up there. But we try to focus in on either literacy or math for each of our family nights. And the activities, usually we have about ten classrooms, I'll say, at Forest Street that have these particular activities in them. So if it's a math night, every classroom would have a math activity in it. And then when the parents come in, they would get a, a kind of a, a map of what we've got going on around the school, and they'd see the different activities in the different classrooms, and they can kind of just pick and choose with their kids on where they want to go. So they go to one room for a while, and then they go do their activity, and then they go off to another room for a while and do their activity. And it's really, I guess I have to give a lot of kudos to the staff that's involved with the planning and making all this stuff happen, because they come up with some really neat ideas, as far as things that would be really engaging for kids. So there are a lot of art-type activities, I would say, that include the, include the math, math and the literature-type stuff that we're doing. Our last activity that we had was a math night, that, I'll show you some slides of just the different activities. But this here kind of speaks to things that we've done in the past. You know, we've had Dr. Seuss night with all the Dr. Seuss books, that kind of stuff. We even had a literacy night that incorporated some magic with Mr. Robel, one of our retired high school teachers came over and put on a wonderful performance for us, that kind of stuff. So on average, we have at Forest Street about 170. Last year we had about 170 attendance per family night. We kicked off the new one, this year we had 120, I believe it was, for our first family night. A little bit down, but there was a lot going on that evening, so. But it was still, still pretty, pretty good attendance. All right, so. You're going to get one video anyway. And there should be sound probably on the computer, but at least you can see what's going on here. This is Build a Monster activity. And I'm not so concerned about the sound, is just seeing the kids in action and how happy they are. This is just at the beginning of the family night, we had a couple, a couple of parents in there with a few kids. And there's Michelle Vemus, one of our kindergarten teacher's assistant with the activity, and so forth. So. It's all hands-on stuff. We had, we had Fruit Loop graphing at the last one, all math-related, Making Cloud Dough. PBIS, we always have a, we always have one room dedicated to that because it's kind of our overall theme of behavior management and promoting positive behaviors within our school. And it helps parents really get tuned in with what we're doing on a daily basis around school as well. Trail Mix, popular one, they like the snacks, especially if they can eat them, they like the, they really like the activities. So here are some of the other ones they did. Mustache measuring number bump and addition bump, plus-one fall game football measuring. So it's all good stuff. So that's kind of it at Forest Street. You know, we're going forward, our next family night's coming up, is on January 18th. And that focus is going to be purely on literacy. This one was on math. We're going to bring in an author, from a local author, and it's going to be Lori Chow, is going to come in. And she's going to present some of her literature that she has and so forth to us. We're promoting that, and I'm hoping that's going to be a pretty good turnout as well. All right, so at Red Creek, kind of following the same philosophies, there's, we're expanding now, I know Forest Street's done four family nights a year. We did two last year, so we're going to do four this year. So that's adding on a little more to this. Last year our average attendance around 100, a little less. We've had our first one now this year. The STEAM was our theme, Science, Technology, Engineering, Art and Math. And we had over 200 people with over 100 families, so lots of kiddos there. I think the only complaint we got, it was too short. It's an hour long, but it flies by pretty darn fast. And I'll let Laura.
So before I talk about this slide, I just wanted to let you know, like, how do you organize something like this? This, these were all the activities that we did on this STEAM night. And so we have a spreadsheet, shared spreadsheet, so all the grades can see what all the other grades are planning. And the expectation is every grade plans two and lists who's going to do what, what materials they need, so if we have to purchase things. So it's kind of a slick way, and I actually share that with our high school groups. We've worked very closely with the high school FFA. They've come a couple of times, and I think each time they've come, they've donated books to our LMC, which is awesome. And they were doing tractor building. I have a picture of that. This little guy down in the corner, see the orange hitch? They were pretty excited it even had a hitch. So we have two books up in our LMC. Yeah, Mr. Markart there too. Also, I'm not sure if I'm going to remember her name. She graduated two years ago as the state.
Sierra Cabaske.
Yes, thank you. She is there, you can see the back of her jacket. She came and attended as well, so that was pretty fun for her to work with her former teacher and students. So, so the teachers fill out that spreadsheet. We also invited, the high school STEAM group came. And unfortunately, the teachers were able to come, but the students were all busy. So the teachers had a really good time with our kids, and they were launching marshmallows. I think that's up in the top here. But, oh yeah, we had seedy spinners, that was a hit. We had, that cafeteria was trashed between our slime and our ooblaq. We had goopy stuff everywhere. Online coding, the balloon towers, that was a huge hit. They were all over the fourth grade wing. Spheroids, towers, legograms and a marble maze that the kids made. So yeah, STEAM blows them away. That was our biggest hit last year too. Kind of reaches all areas of interest, so, yeah.
And then a little bit about the why. You know, at the elementary level, we don't have quite the co-curricular activities they do at the middle school and high school to bring our families into our schools. So community engagement is obviously one of our four main pillars. And so it's a great way to get our community members and families in the school. Connections with the W extension, with our high school groups. The dairy board was also paired up with the FFA to donate the books and participate with that. So, so a lot of great organizations in getting our families into the school. Because like I say, we don't have the athletic and co-curricular events to do that, so we create events so we can.
I think that the parents are working right along with their child, with the teacher too. That's really nice modeling and nice at being right along with them, that's great.
Oh, they enjoy it, for sure.
Last year we had an egg drop, and I think the parents were way more strategic. Bag full of stuff, and they had to do whatever they could come up with. And then they went from the top of the stairs, there's kind of an opening in the grand staircase, and they had mats blocking, so eggs didn't splatter on the few little steps underneath there. But, you know, the parents were just as excited to see the egg drop broke or not.
Thank you, thank you. Give that to Dave.
A few interesting things going on at the middle school over the past few weeks include the whole month of December and January. Our counselors have been meeting with each and every one of the eighth graders for their annual ACP conferences, academic and career planning. It's about a 15-minute conference where the counselor sits down with a student, and the parents are invited in also, which is kind of neat, a letter is sent home. Sometimes the parents show up, sometimes they don't. I happen to sit in with my eighth grader when he did his conference. And they talk about strengths, things they want to work on, what they think high school's going to be like, that's kind of one of the big questions. So it's really neat, I think, that they take the time to do that ACP conferencing every year with the eighth grade students. And I guess the whole focus is on eighth grade tonight, so they're kind of going to hog the show. But Mr. Stumper is our technology education teacher in the middle school, and his eighth grade manufacturing students are making wooden toys. It doesn't necessarily coincide with Christmas, but it can. And it's, I think, during the holiday season, a lot of the kids were thinking about being in the giving spirit. So these kids came up with their own, that they would make some additional toys for kids in a third-world country that don't have anything. And whether this, I don't think the toys are going to get made until maybe January. At this point, they're in the planning phases and creating all kinds of interesting toys to make that they sell to students in the middle school. And then a lot of those extra toys will be made to go overseas to a third-world country. And each, each manufacturing team has different representatives. You might have a marketing team, you might have a foreman, you might have the worker bees, you might have the engineering team. So all these kids work together and they, they come up with a project, and they market it, they sell it. And then with the proceeds, a lot of times they'll have a pizza party or put that back into the fund for the next group. Mr. Stumper's pretty excited about that and very proud of his students wanting to give back to somebody else. And eighth graders Kaylee Sueno and Mia Handley are working on a really cool FCC LA project. They are taking donations from students, and the students get to, for a dollar, they get to wear a, I think it's a hat day on Wednesday or a pajama day. And all that money goes toward the funds that Kaylee and Mia will need to make tied fleece blankets for people who are in the, at the Gunderson Oncology Unit in La Crosse undergoing chemotherapy and radiation. So they did their research and they contacted the hospital, and two eighth-grade girls, all on their own, you know, their FCC LA project, and found out that these individuals would, you know, are in need of nice warm blankets, or they're nice to have. So they took it upon themselves to create this little mini fundraiser in the middle school. And the students bring in their dollar, they wear their hat, they get a sticker from the teacher, the teachers collect the money, and the girls use the money to purchase the materials for the fleece blankets. And they hope to have the projects done by the end of January. And we might even try to bring them in in January or February, the two girls, to share their project with you. Some really kind of neat giving, students wanting to do something for others, that service learning piece, so. Subject, any questions you might have? Thanks.
Good evening, a couple of quick things from the high school. Just wanted to clarify, excuse me. I just wanted to clarify what Nolan talks about tonight. The Green and Healthy Schools is a designation by the DPI for schools that fulfill certain requirements as far as energy use, recycling and water use. And so that's the designation that Mrs. Knodel is working to obtain for our school district and our schools. She's working with the elementary principals in elementary schools on developing recycling habits for students. One of the things that they are implementing, after having talked with our disposal company, Advanced Disposal, is recycling of the, or actually composting of the milk cartons. So in the elementary schools, I understand they already dump the milk out into a bucket, and apparently that goes to a farmer who, I don't know if he feeds it to his cattle or something. Connie was telling us about that. Feeds it to his calves, I think, or uses it for something. And so we're going to do that, we're going to look at doing that district-wide, composting those milk cartons that save, that'll save us on the number of dumps that we need for our dumpsters in the district. And a number of things, including the dehydrator that Nolan mentioned. Sparta has had one for a number of years and reduces considerably the amount of waste that we have. And they actually donate the bags of this compost and then take free will donations back to help fund different projects. So that's something the Student Senate and Mrs. Knodel and Braggs and a number of other groups are working together on. The next thing is on Wednesday of this week, we have our assembly, our awards ceremony for academics. And it's going to be run by the group that you saw at the last board meeting, the Stripes class, from Mr. Wall. And they requested to organize and run the assembly. And so we're going to have it during the day, it's going to be similar to the Veterans Day assembly schedule, so about, I believe, 10:30 on Wednesday. We'll have that in the London Theater and have awards for honor, honor roll attendance. And then there are, the Stripes class is coming up with a number of other awards to hand out. So that's it from the high school.
Dr. Cabaske. And from Gebhardt School, last month we talked about that we have some students that are starting to transition back to the high school, went back to the middle school from our program. And with that transitioning, we've picked up two more students. So right now we're working on a lot of culture rebuilding and them getting used to each other and knowing each other. And then this Thursday, they are going to be having a holiday dinner. So they are cooking dinner for us as well as their families for this Thursday. So we are looking forward to that as well. We've also had two organizations, and I wish I could remember which, that have contacted us to build benches for the organizations within the community here. So we are looking forward to that as well, so, thank you.
Thank you. Move on to discussing association of school board business. We will be electing tonight someone to represent our board, our district at the delegate assembly. And that happens on Wednesday afternoon at the state convention. I guess I would encourage anyone who hasn't had the opportunity to be part of that assembly and to vote to step forward to volunteer if they wish. I think it's a great experience just to have this exposure about how things get decided. All 422 school districts are, have a spot in a vote. Usually we have about 400 districts there that are represented. So is there anyone who would like to step forward to be our representative? It's, it's a really good opportunity to hear all the debate that goes on and then about each one of the resolutions in how it's passed.
Who's attending, Mr.?
Pardon?
Who's attending the conference, Mr.?
Everyone except Laurel has signed up.
I said I can't.
Oh, we're not, sorry, that's my mistake, then, okay, sorry. What timeframe is that on Wednesday? Wednesday afternoon, it starts at 1:00 and it can go anywhere from 3:30 to, it's going to be 6:30, depending on the discussions that happen. And there's, there's also on Tuesday evening, we'll have a educational time that we all gather and we can go through the resolutions just to answer questions. And at that time, we'll take emergency resolutions that come forward to for consideration. And then the committee will meet later that evening to decide on that. So you would, you'd get an orientation about what your duties would be if you wished to come down there. I've done it the last two years. It's interesting. I'm willing to let someone else try. And you've done it, Amy.
I have, I enjoyed it, it was very interesting. And I was just curious one time and just sat in and watched, you know, your previous time participating.
That's right, Patty. I, I can do it or you can do it, doesn't matter.
I can't be there Tuesday, I would be going down Wednesday morning early, so I don't know.
It would be Wednesday afternoon is when it starts at, I think it's at 1:00.
I can do it if you don't want to do it.
You do it this year, I'll do it next year.
It's a deal.
Okay. I make a motion to elect Mary Jo Ranth as our delegate assembly representative this year. Is there a second?
No second.
Thank you. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Let's see, I guess those of you going to the state conference, there'll be a coordination of rides and activities too happening soon. So just look out for that. I would also like to open up for the next tiger tribute. If someone has anything that they want to write on behalf of the board, step forward to do that. I guess I prefer, at this point, someone other than myself, Mary Jo or Patty, since they're up for election. I don't want it to appear that we're candidates anyway. But if, just kind of think about it, if you have anything you'd like to say on behalf of the board. Usually we do that and send it on to myself and Shelley.
When is it due?
We don't have a date yet.
Maybe you should use attending the conference, could write about that.
Yeah.
I was just suggesting when she was going to the conference.
I can never think of anything to say, and so that's an easy idea. Okay, that's coming up.
That is a good idea.
It's a good idea.
So I think she just nominated you?
No, we're not, we're not, there's, there's a lot of people going, so. But that's an idea, something to write about.
Is there usually a topic for that, otherwise?
No. No.
It's just a board communication. I agree, probably isn't, this is a topic I asked.
So.
I'm making eye contact.
I noticed. I noticed. We can decide that, but just, just kind of keep it on in your thoughts about.
Could we do a collective one about the conference?
We could.
That might be a good way.
We could do a group report.
All right.
I can plan the other. Okay, any future agenda items for consideration? Okay, with that, I ask for a motion to adjourn.
One more motion.
All in favor say yes.
You could have nominated Scott.
We could have done that. 7:45, thank you.